All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. I want to thank you everyone for being here for our October meeting. Now we want to call on Joey Oakley to come forward, do the invocation. Joey is the Regional Director of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes and is also the Interim Pastor at Farmington Methodist Church. Joey, before you pray and before you do, could you tell the all of us, and we're live streamed here, about the event that's going on on Sunday night for all the young people and families in the Davie County school system? You mind?
Yes, sir. I'm glad you asked. So we have FCA Fields of Faith is this Sunday night at 6:00 at the high school in the stadium. It's an event where our student leaders from Fellowship of Christian Athletes, we have about 23 student leaders at Davie High who lead their peers in Bible study and devotions and prayer every other week for the FCA club. They're going to be putting on an event for all youth and all parents and for the entire community to come and to pray together for our community and to pray together for our schools. And we would invite all of you to come. There'll be several of our student leaders giving their testimonies. There'll be a band, there's going to be food, and we'll have a speaker as well. Last year we had about 396 students come, and we're hoping for more this year. So you're all invited, Sunday at 6:00.
Thank you.
From Psalm 1, blessed is the man who walks not in the counsel of the wicked, nor stands in the seat of sinners, nor sits in the seat of scoffers, but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and on his law he meditates day and night. He is like a tree planted by streams of water that yields its fruit in season, and its leaf does not wither. In all that he does, he prospers. The wicked are not so, but are like chaff that the wind drives away. Therefore the wicked will not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous; for the Lord knows the way of the righteous, but the way of the wicked will perish. Let's pray together. Oh mighty God, we ask that today that you would be in our midst. God, that you would allow us to continue to turn our hearts back to you. God, that we would be a people who followed after you in our nation, in our state, and yes, in our community in Davie County. Lord, I pray that as you gather us together tonight, Lord, that you would allow wisdom to prevail. God, that you would make all of the ways of this commission in our county prosper indeed. God, that this county might be a place where fruit is born in its season and where leaves do not wither, and when your love and your mercy is extended to all. God, we thank you. This comes through your Son Jesus' cry, through his death, burial, and resurrection. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Joey. We appreciate that. Now for our, to lead us in the pledge, we'd like to say just a little bit about those that have served our country that come here to help us with the pledge. Tonight, Mr. John Short III is a U.S. Navy veteran who served from 1979 to 1985. He was an aircraft structural and hydraulic mechanic with the Carrier Airborne Early Warning Squadron 117. He did shore duty with the Navy Fighter Weapons School, Top Gun. He spent 16 months at sea on the USS Ranger and the USS Enterprise during the Iranian crisis. While onboard the USS Ranger, Mr. Short was involved with the release of hostages in Iran. He was awarded the Navy Expeditionary Medal, the Humanitarian Service Award, and two Sea Service deployment ribbons. Both of Mr. Short's parents are U.S. Army veterans. His mother was the very first WAC, Women Army Corps, to ever be stationed with the training battalion. Mr. Short moved to Davie County after he discharged from the Navy in 1985 to be close to his mother. He is a lifetime member of the Davie County Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 75, a member of the American Legion Post 55, and Legion Riders, and a member of the VFW. Please lead us in the pledge, and thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's an absolute, my pleasure to always lead, and it's a pleasure to be here with my community leaders. Me and my wife love living here in Davie County, and I love the invocation. Prior, I'm really looking forward to Sunday, our church, Bear Creek, we were talking about that, Bear Creek Baptist Church yesterday. We're really looking forward to watching the kids Sunday up there at the high school.
Amen.
And you all have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
I'll see you Sunday morning at Bear Creek. I'll be there Sunday mornings there at Bear Creek.
Thank you, sir. Ethics and conflict disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda tonight, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest respecting the matter that's on the agenda which have come before the board for a vote tonight. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before you adopt the agenda. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I would conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member as to this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Item five, we'll adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Ms. Finney?
Second.
And Mr. Renninger, second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Mr. Vogler, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got four people who've signed up, three under one group have signed up, and then one individual. And since we've got a group, that individual group will have five minutes instead of three minutes to speak. I'll be keeping time. You will see when there's two minutes remaining, when there's one minute remaining, when there's 30 seconds remaining, and when time is up. And I will be doing that. So outside of that, without any further ado, I've got Linda Mace, Joanne Giff, and Larry Bass, excuse me, have signed up for a group. If you can come forward to the podium, state your name.
My name is Linda Mace, and I live at 142 Old Stone Trail in Advance. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm here tonight as chairman of the Davie County Republican Party and the Davie County Republican Executive Committee. This committee is the governing body of the Davie Republican Party per our county's plan of organization, and it consists of party officers, chairman of the county commissioners, chairman of the Davie County Board of Education, all other elected Republicans who reside in Davie County, and all precinct chairman. Representatives of our committee are here tonight to support a resolution written by two of our members, Joanne and Larry, Joanne's here, and Joanne Giff and Larry Bass, and approved by our executive committee. Larry Bass has agreed to represent the committee by reading our resolution, and I have copies for each of you. Thank you for your time and consideration of this resolution. So, would you like to hand these out?
Thank you very much. Oh yeah, where are these on yours?
Well, my first disappointment is that my font is not as big as Linda's were, so...
Well, I have to read that. I'm old.
So I'll also try to get through this without my reading glasses. My name is Larry Bass, and I come before you this evening on behalf of the Davie County Republican Party Executive Committee to present to you our resolution regarding any potential COVID-19 or variant-driven or related mandates. This includes any attempt by local, state, and or federal government entities to overreach their constitutional authority regarding health concerns of an individual regarding vaccines, vaccine boosters, masks, and any lockdown measures associated with the businesses and schools. Furthermore, we reject the current attempt by the WHO, World Health Organization, to impose any and all global health mandates. The WHO is currently discussing the extent of regulations regarding a pandemic to include digital health certificates and vaccine passports. We support a person's right in Davie County to choose those measures that they individually believe will keep them safe and healthy. No government, business, corporation, and/or medical entity or facility has the constitutional authority to infringe on a citizen's right to choose. Whereas Pfizer's clinical data revealed 1,223 deaths, 42,000 adverse cases, 158,000 adverse incidents, and approximately 1,000 side effects. And whereas government agencies, media, and tech companies, and other corporations have committed enormous fraud by claiming COVID injections are safe and effective. And whereas informed consent is considered a standard ethical practice in every facet of healthcare treatment except for COVID-19 vaccines under emergency use authorization by the Food and Drug Administration. And whereas we now know that COVID-19 vaccinated individuals can still become infected with and transmit COVID-19. And whereas continued experimentation on humans and denial of informed consent are violations of the Nuremberg Code and therefore constitute crimes against humanity. And whereas many North Carolinians lost their jobs, ability to attend school, access to public places, access to loved ones, and many other freedoms because they chose not to receive the COVID-19 vaccine and/or wear a mask. And/or as a general result of the lockdowns. And whereas the usefulness of masks were being aggressively overstated. And whereas a recent German study reveals the harm being caused by masking as very serious with even a few minutes of wearing a surgical cloth or N95 mask resulting in long-term damages. And whereas small business firms forms 99% of the United States business entities and bore the brunt of COVID lockdowns. And whereas nearly 40% of small businesses have closed since COVID lockdowns first occurred in the United States. And whereas overly restrictive measures cause needless harm, especially for the majority of generally healthy Americans who will experience moderate to no symptoms if they catch the virus. Therefore, be it resolved that in support of individual liberty, the Davie County Republican Party Executive Committee, North Carolina, supports a ban on all COVID and variant-related vaccine and/or booster mandates, mask mandates, as well as school and/or business closures in Davie County. And that the Davie County Republican Party Executive Committee defends personal medical freedom and affirms the right of all North Carolinians to make their own healthcare decisions related to any such mandates without coercion. Thank you for considering our resolution.
And Mr. Chair, the next one that we've got is Julie Whitaker, and she has put down her topic, DCP tail.
You know, that's the Public Library. Good evening, I'm Julie Whitaker. While several trustees are new and need time to learn, there seem to be interest from an individual to review material and challenge some because that individual may think the material inappropriate or offensive. I'm encouraging the commissioners and the library trustees to reconsider the American Library Association's 70-year-old Freedom to Read statement, and I will quote it for you now. The freedom to read is guaranteed by the Constitution. Those with faith in free people will stand firm on these constitutional guarantees of essential rights and will exercise the responsibilities that accompany these rights. One, it is the public, it is in the public interest for publishers and librarians to make available the widest diversity of views and expressions, including those that are unorthodox, unpopular, or considered dangerous by majority. Two, publishers, librarians, and booksellers do not need to endorse every idea or presentation they make available. It would conflict with the public interest for them to establish their own political, moral, or aesthetic views as a standard for determining what should be published or circulated. Three, it is contrary to the public interest for publishers or librarians to bar access to writings on the basis of personal history or political affiliations of the author. Four, there is no place in our society for efforts to coerce the taste of others, to confine adults to the reading matter deemed suitable for adolescents, or to inhibit the efforts of writers to achieve artistic expression. Five, it is not in the public interest to force a reader to accept the prejudgment of a label characterizing any expression or its author as subversive or dangerous. Number six, it is the responsibility of publishers and librarians, as guardians of the people's freedom to read, to contest encroachments upon that freedom by individuals or groups seeking to impose their own standards or tastes upon the community at large, and by the government whenever it seeks to reduce or deny public access to public information. And finally, it is the responsibility of publishers and librarians to give full meaning to the freedom to read by providing books that enrich the quality and diversity of thought and expression. By the exercise of this affirmative responsibility, they can demonstrate that the answer to a bad book is a good one, and the answer to a bad idea is a good one. In more simple terms, the only people who have the prerogative to disallow anyone, any kind of public materials, are the parents of minor children. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, that's the only individuals who've signed up tonight.
Presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought it would be appropriate for you all and for the greater community to have an update on our water treatment plant project that we have going on in Kool-Aimie. This is a 50-plus million dollar project, and this is month seven since we broke ground back in March. So I asked our Public Utilities Director, Mr. Johnny Lambert, to give us a brief update of where we are today with the project.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, thanks for giving me a little bit of your time tonight. Kind of want to go through some, just a brief update of where we are with the water treatment plant. Currently, the whole site has been rough graded, and they're continuing to, or they're starting to install a lot of the underground-type piping. So as you can see in this picture, this is the UV area, so the UV treatment, that's going to be the disinfection for the treatment plant, the ultraviolet disinfection process. Here, the electricians are installing all the conduit preparations for the installation of the gravel, the rebar, and then pouring concrete in the upcoming weeks. This is the bottom of the clear well, so the clear well is what holds all the finished water before it goes out to the system. This is the bottom pad of that. This is going to be a sectioned clear well so we can maintenance half of it and still keep half of it in service. This is building resiliency in this plant as we move forward. Here, you'll see a lot of the underground piping going in. This is for the flocculation basins and sedimentation basins. So this is really the first part of water treatment, is when this water comes in from the Yakon River, or the South Yakon River in this case. And this is where you're adding a chemical, so all the small particles become larger particles, so we can filter them out. And then, of course, this is all the water main piping that's going to go up Main Street, Nolly Road, Gladstone Road, and 601. They've already started boring this, so we hope to see pipe installation in the next two weeks. So we thought we'd go ahead and give you a financial update in the process while we're here. So the original contract amount was $50,898,599. We've had one change order to date, and this change order was, we had to move some piping where the clear well is. The maps that we had show that piping come down around the driveway, but actually went right through where this clear well is, so we had to move that. So that took your contract amount to the $50,956,000. So paid out to date, we've paid out $4,854,739.23. We use these numbers to kind of keep track of our progress to make sure that we're on schedule. We don't like to see a payout go larger than the progress of work, so something we'll keep up with in the future. And then the schedule, or, sorry, so yeah, so the schedule. So over the six to eight months, there's a lot of things that are going to be moving at the same time. We look to install, start installing the 12- and 16-inch water lines from Main Street to Lee Jean's tank. We'll install all the underslab piping, the UV facility, chemical facility, high-service pump station, and clear well concretes. And then begin placing concrete for the base slabs of the water treatment plant, the UV facility, high-service pump station, and the clear well. And then we'll, the completion of the finished water transfer mains right now is 12-8-25, so that's for all of our 12- and 16-inch water mains to the Lee Jean's area. And then the commissioning of the new water treatment plant will be 1-5-20-26. The substantial completion date is 2-6-20-26, and then we'll run the plants together, so there won't be a final completion. We'll do that for around 30 days, and there'll be a final completion of around 3-8-26. Our schedule's modifying on a daily, or a monthly. We have monthly progress meetings, but we've had some issues with getting some of the duct line and pipe. The vendors are putting some lead times on us for that, so that's all built in here. So we'll try to do this every time we do a schedule to update this, or every time we do an update, to update the schedule, so you'll see how much further it's either coming back or being pushed out. And I guess the last thing is questions or comments and site visits. So if anyone would like to go to the site, myself, just let us know, and we can get everyone out there, or get a couple of you out there, or however you'd like to do it.
We, Johnny mentioned earlier today, maybe towards, maybe first of November, right before our meeting, we could all get together and go out there, and we'll talk about that, but that'd give you another 30 days of process and progress.
Well, I can tell you, it's a totally different site from what these pictures show now. Walls are going up, walls are being poured, so it's ever-changing, and for us to keep up on the updates to the exact moment of these meetings are going to be tough. One more quick update to the Main Church Road water line. I know that's been a priority for the board, and that water line is in the ground. We've had some setbacks on getting fire hydrants, so they're waiting on the fire hydrants, and actually, I got some good news this afternoon. They have received the fire hydrant, so they're going to go pick some up to get started, and the rest of them are going to be delivered Wednesday. So we'll probably look for about three weeks, and we'll have that line completed and in service, hopefully.
That's ahead of schedule.
That's definitely ahead of schedule. We run into a little bit of rock, but we've got a rock clause in all of our contracts that if we run into rock, we pay for a cubic, a certain amount of cubic foot, and right now it's about $1,700, so I think that's all we'll see in that.
Any other questions or comments?
Johnny, how many million gallons per day is this plant capable of?
3.5.
How does that compare to what we use in the county?
Compared to what we have now?
To what we use in the county.
We're about an average right now, during peak season, about 2.2 to 2.6 probably between both plants. So we'll have the capacity of around 4.2 when it's completed. That's without, that's not including Knoxville. I think their capacity is roughly around a million gallons a day as well. We also designed in this project the upgrade for Sparks if needed. We've got it pushed way out about 10 or 12 years. If we have to pull that back, we can, but Sparks is easily addition to where we can add at least a million gallons a day probably to that plant pretty easily.
Are the repairs that are needed at Sparks going to be able to wait?
We'll see in usage. I mean, it's basically an addition to that plant. You're just adding another clarifier, or two clarifiers and filters, so it's an addition. We'll see in usage goes. If we grow an extreme amount right now, it could be sooner, or it could be pushed out. I mean, that's all going to be compared on usage over the next five years.
I know there's some issues with the buildings there. Are those on schedule?
They are. Yep, we've got contracts for everybody to start work, and I think we're just waiting on some of the windows to be built, and then we'll start setting them in.
All right. Thank you.
Others?
Thank you.
Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you.
Next, we have our August financial report. I'll ask our Assistant County Manager, Finance Director, Robin West.
Good evening. There's a lot of tiny print on that.
Yes, very small.
Hope this is not an eye test, but you can also find this report on your, in your agenda packet. Hopefully you're able to blow it up a little bit, trying to get everything on one page, so I apologize for the small print. It's on pages 16 and 17 of your agenda packet. So what this report does is compares fiscal year-to-date August, which is just two months so far, to prior year through August. So we just compare the actuals for those year-to-date months. And I'm happy to report that August year-to-date revenues are about 12.123% of our estimates as compared to 5.69%. This is almost entirely due to tax collections. We were able to send out our tax notices a month earlier this year than we did last fiscal year. So we are cautiously optimistic, I would frame it as, but just as a reminder, our tax collection percentage was over 99% last fiscal year, which was hard to achieve and will be hard to maintain. So as we get closer to the start date in early January, you'll see this difference kind of close up a bit. Also expenditures for the general fund were 14.3% of the budget. Just as a frame of reference, 16.66 is 2/12ths of what we've budgeted, or 2/12ths of a year. So that gives you some idea of how much we've spent of the budget. So again, I would say that we're cautiously optimistic, but only two months into the fiscal year, it's hard to track any trends or anything like that. So just let me know if you have any questions. It will get more interesting as we come along.
Thank you, Robin. We appreciate the transparency. Thank you. County Managers Report. Mr. Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of items I wanted to hit on. At our meeting last month, and September the 5th, we had some public comments in regards to mental health. I'm happy to report that the individual that spoke did have several meetings with partners behavioral health, and also with our internal staff at Human and Health Services, even though we don't directly do mental health. We were able to start the process with the individual, and due to their personal information, I can't really go into it anymore, but just know that we've been in touch with them. Also, there was a list of concerns, and we are in the process of completing that, and I just wanted to give that to you all at once instead of just giving you a partial list. So we will be updating that once we have that completed. Want to thank a lot of folks. Last Thursday, we had our Davie- Last Thursday, we had our Davie Senior, Miss Senior Davie Pageant. It was the first pageant that we've been able to have at the Senior Center since COVID. We had a packed house. Our Director, Kim Shelsky, and her staff, Michelle Ellis and Carrie Miller, did an outstanding job putting everything together. I want to thank Melinda Zeliger, who was our emcee, Ken Gamble, Suzanne Wright, Mayor Will Marklin, Sheriff Hartman and his wife, Robin, John Gallimore, and Commissioners Shoef, Jones, Finney, and Poindexter, who all volunteered during the event. And a big congratulations to Azalee Stockton of Coolamie. She was named the winner. And I also believe Miss Stockton's also our indoor walking champion, so she holds several belts here in Davie County. We have two series of community conversations coming up here in the month of October. One is a continuation of our conversation that we had at the end of August when it comes to growth and development. We are seeking input from the community of exactly what has happened, and how you feel about that, and what direction you'd like to see us go in. I will add one caveat, that as we look at growth and development as a county, we are responsible for the areas outside of the municipalities, outside of the municipalities and NC DOT. We do work with them, but it's not necessarily our direct jurisdiction. The rest of Davie County is up to us to look in for the direction from you all and where you want to go. Our first session is this Thursday, October the 5th, at 6:00 PM at EMS Station 2 in Farmington. These sessions are really more designed for the community to talk to us. We're going to take all the information from the community and put it together in a report. Our next session will be October the 11th, Wednesday of next week, at 6:00 PM at EMS Station 3, and our last session will be October the 17th, at 6:00 PM at EMS Station 4. If you do want to participate, you can come to any one of those. You don't have to come to all three, but we will put the information together. Also, we are looking for any feedback, so if you do go on our website, we do have a citizen's comment that you can direct towards myself or our Planning Director if you have any additional feedback, but we would like to hear from the community as we look at growing strategically in the future. Our second community conversation involves our Comprehensive Aging Plan. They will have four sessions as we look to update our master plan when it comes to aging. The first one will also start on Thursday, October the 8th, at 10:00 AM at Senior Services. The second will be October the 10th, at 2:00 PM at The Bridge in Coolamie. The third will be October 16th, at 6:00 PM at the Davie County Public Library, and the fourth one will be on October 25th, at 2:00 PM at the Farmington Community Center. We do have two important months coming up in the month of November, as we celebrated our veteran tonight. For the whole month of October, we will be again celebrating Operation Green Light, excuse me, for the month of November, we'll be celebrating Operation Green Light. You will see green lights up through the community. It is our way to show our support for our veterans. During the month of October, you will see a lot of purple. Purple is in support of Domestic Violence Month. This past weekend, in conjunction with a lot of our staff in Davie County schools, we held a yard sale for our Special Olympics. This was year 12, and this was our second highest total. The Special Olympics as a whole raised nearly $4,000, proceeds of which will go for uniforms for the soccer team and the volleyball team. Want to say a big thanks to a lot of our county staff who helped and volunteered. Suzanne Wright, Johnny Easter, Kim Hefner, Paula Tucker, Laura Traf, Chris Rush, Amber Robertson, and Paige Wheelie. I also want to thank the Davie County School System staff for their help in helping to promote the event. I'm getting to the end, hold on. The All-American County Award that we won over the summer in Denver, we are having t-shirt sales, the t-shirts are available. The proceeds will go back towards the four groups that helped us to win the award. If you'd like to purchase a t-shirt, they can be purchased at the Bermuda Run Town Hall, the Davie County Chamber of Commerce, Foster Drugs, and Southern Tees Boutique. And lastly, tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM here in downtown Moxville, we are having our Public Safety Day. It will be right here, it's open to the public, there will be all kinds of events, so we hope to see, we hope to have another great day of weather like we've had today for the car show that's going on right now. So if you would like to have a good time tomorrow night as well, please come out for Public Safety Day, and that's my report.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions, comments? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Finney?
What's up?
Ms. Renninger, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? It's you now, any opposed? Item 10, old business, any old business? Any new business? Okay, Commissioners' comments? Richard?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always good to see a fairly full house of smiling faces, mostly. I would like to say thanks to John Short for coming tonight and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, for his service, and for all the people who are veterans. Thank you for your service. That's pretty much, like, see you here next month. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Brent?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I would like to thank people in public comments for giving impassioned information, because I think that's part of what sets our society and our government apart from others. We may not totally agree on everything that's been said, but that's part of another thing that makes us great, so I appreciate all the comments we've heard tonight. I'd like to add on the meetings that are coming up starting Thursday, that I want to reiterate what Mr. Barnett said, that the municipalities and the county are two separate issues, and it's not like you're going to get your hands slapped if you bring up an issue about a municipality, but if you've got any questions leading into making your comments, I would tell you to reach out to Commissioners, reach out to Mr. Barnett, Johnny Easter, other staff members, to get that information. You know, we may be able to save you time, or it may give you an opportunity to frame your questions differently. I would also ask that most helpful, we want to hear from you about your concerns. That was one of the things that I tried to do when I campaigned, was to get individual opinions, not just get the world according to how I saw it. And by that, I would ask you to ask, to give as much specificity to your comments and concerns as possible, because that's helpful when we try to glean information from it and make decisions as we move forward. It's real easy to sit and say, well, generally, I just don't like the way the county's changing, or we're growing too much, or all that, and that sentiment is appreciated, but any specifics that you can give us, or any specifics about housing, about industrial, whatever, something you really like, something you don't really like, something you want to see more of, please share that with us. The more detailed information, instead of just generalities, will be most appreciated, most helpful. Thank you.
Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone coming out, and I would say that these meetings we have coming up, I would echo what Commissioner Shoef said, we are looking for input, and so I would hope to see some of your smiling faces at some of these meetings. Tried to break them up, so they weren't all on the same night, to give everyone a chance, hopefully to work with the schedule. So anyway, hope to see you at those meetings, and look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
Benita?
Thank you all for coming tonight. I see some new faces in the crowd tonight, so we're glad that you're here. We hope that you'll come back. I always love for people to attend and share their ideas and opinions with us, and I also hope that you will do so at these growth and development meetings and the Aging Services meetings. This is your opportunity to share your ideas and put in your input, and I hope they'll be well-attended, because we do hear a lot about the growth. And I hope a lot of people will come for the Aging Services, because we've, our statistics tell us that that's our fastest-growing population, so we need to make sure we're doing what needs to be done there, and that we can continue to have wonderful events like we did last Thursday night with the Miss Senior Davie County Pageant, because it was tons of fun. I want to say a huge happy birthday to Karen, our clerk. Last Friday was her birthday, and she celebrated all weekend, but we hope you had a wonderful birthday. And thank you for all that you do for us. And it's already been mentioned, tomorrow night's Public Safety Day, and I don't know about the rest of you, but when I look at my October calendar, I literally almost have an anxiety attack, because there's so much going on in Davie County in October. There is absolutely no reason for anybody in this county to be bored during the month of October, but it will be nearly impossible to attend everything, so I think all of us will try to be at as much as possible. And I would like to thank Brian and Suzanne for stepping up and making sure the lady from last month was able to meet with the people she needed to meet with, and I hope she feels better, and I hope she got some questions answered, but thank you all so much for reaching out to her and making that happen.
Thank you all for being here. I can't add a whole lot to that. Everyone has covered everything completely. We really appreciate you being here. We appreciate all you do for the citizens of Davie County. You know, it's not government, it's not government that makes this county a great place to live, though it is part of it. It's a piece of the pie, but it's the families of Davie County that make this a great place to live, and we thank you for everything that you do on a daily basis to make government work, to make our schools work, to just make this community the place it is. And it's all you, not us. So thank you for being here. We are now going into closed session, and I'm going to read this, so just bear with me. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A-5, to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or two, the amount of compensation and other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract. Number two, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31A-11A-6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Stay moved.
Second? All in favor? Thanks, guys. We'll be back out as soon as we're done. Mr. Shoef, all in favor? Okay. We're back in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.